Good evening and welcome to our regular scheduled School Board meeting of March 23. If you would all rise for a moment of silence in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you very much, Dr. Moxley.
Yes, good evening to everyone. Thank you very much for being here this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you and welcome back Kelsey Collins, who is our Student Representative of the Month for the month of March. We're so glad to have you back with us here this evening. Kelsey is a senior at South Lake High School and he is a very talented young man who plans to major in music education. And he plans to attend Southeastern University in Lakeland, Florida. He's an honor roll student and he's been involved in many different musicals and plays, sharing his musical talent. He had lead roles in school plays of Annie and a Christmas Carol. He takes advanced classes, honors classes, and AP classes. He's the South Lake High School afternoon announcer, member of student government. He's been involved in the AVID program. He's been a chorus member and he's also been a member of FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America. He has served in many different volunteer capacities as a volunteer camp counselor at mascot elementary. He plays the piano, music composition, songwriting, and singing. And so we're very pleased to have Kelsey back with us and we look forward to your report later on in our meeting. Thank you for being here. And I know Kelsey's parents are here in the audience, so thank you again for being here tonight. And the principal of South Lake High School, Mr. McHugh, is here supporting Kelsey. So thank you very much for being here. It also is my pleasure to introduce to you one of our Teacher of the Year finalists, Julie Forghey from Wendy Hill Middle School. So, welcome, Mrs. Forghey.[159.87][160.12](applause) Mrs. Forghey has been teaching 11 years and currently is a teacher for students with autism, spectrum disorder, and intellectual disabilities, a position she's held for five years at Wendy Hill Middle School. And she is very passionate about what she does and you can tell that every single day when you walk into her classroom. Many times successes come in very small increments, but they're huge increments for the students that she serves. And sometimes that is getting into having a nonverbal student express in a verbal way and making a milestone there. And so we're very excited about the work that she has done. She has, she says that no matter what is thrown at us, teachers must have the passion and patience to push through so students are successful. She has been a coach for Special Olympics for Lake County here for many years, an advisor of Best Buddies of Central Florida. She has been a former Rookie Teacher of the Year in '07-'08, and she created the countywide Edmodo page for autism spectrum disorders teachers so that they could collaborate and share. And what an outstanding teacher. And so thank you very much and congratulations for being a finalist for Teacher of the Year. You do a wonderful job. So we look forward to hearing more from you here later in our meeting. And then we have a few highlights that I'd like to share with you. Wednesday evening, we had our Rookie Teacher of the Year ceremony and we recognized Harley Hall. So congratulations to Mr. Hall, a social studies teacher at Claremont Middle School, for being named Rookie Teacher of the Year for Lake County Schools. He is a former law enforcement officer and occasionally uses experiences from his past career to enhance teaching. For examples, when his students study the Fourth Amendment, he has them review a search warrant he wrote in 2010 to see how the requirements spelled out in 1791 still must be met today. So he's really making history from all those many years ago be very real and pertinent to today. His creativity is a tremendous benefit to his students. I know this is just the beginning of what's going to be a long and productive career for Mr. Hall. We're so glad that he was a career changer and chose teaching for a profession and chose Lake County Schools. So congratulations to Mr. Hall and we'll have an opportunity to have our Rookie Teachers of the Year here. We made history in Lake County Saturday night as we hosted our very first Lake County History Fair. And Wendy Hill Middle School, they volunteered to host the event. We didn't have to go chasing after anybody. They volunteered and the teachers and our social studies teachers, they have just been so excited about putting this together, planning this event. So I really want to congratulate all the middle and high school students who participated in our first Lake County History Fair this past weekend. This is something that takes place in districts in the state. Every year, this is a national event and I'm now proud to say that Lake County is part of it. The theme this year was leadership and legacy in history and our students presented some very insightful and thought provoking projects. There were performances, there were websites designed, there were many items that were research-based, well, all of them were research-based, but some were formal research in the form of a paper that was presented. And it was very exciting to see the students excel. Some used technology to do their project. So it was just a wonderful event and congratulations and thanks to all the teachers, students, and parents that participated. And then we launched our Learning in Lake blog and this week, and we'll take this through spring break, we have posed some information and we're continuing to answer questions around Florida standards assessments. We will use this Learning in Lake to vet various topics. And so the topics will change as we go throughout the rest of the year. The last item that I want to highlight is we had FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. Eustace Middle School, I received an email from them. Every year, they have had a number of students place in the top five places. And one particular area, which is keyboarding applications, they have consistently taken first place for a number of years and they continued their trend. And they took first place again in state for keyboarding applications. This is the seventh consecutive year Eustace Middle School has walked away with that title. They had several other, a second place winner in business math, a fourth and a fifth place winner in desktop publishing, and spreadsheet applications, third and fifth place, and webpage creation, fourth place. So Mr. Rasmussen is the computer applications instructor, I'm getting tongue tied tonight, and he does just a fabulous job. And I know that's why his students are so successful. So special congratulations to them. So those are just a few highlights for tonight.
Okay. Next item is changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda.
At this time, I do have one item to bring to be included in the agenda tonight. Due to time on the consent agenda, you have several field trips that are related to students attending Key Club International and District Educational and Leadership Conference. Those are coming to you because of the location in Orlando. They are an overnight trip. We have, several of our schools did get the requests in on time to be put on the agenda, but we have one school that did not. And so in order for them to attend, I am going to ask for them to have this placed on the agenda tonight to be included with the others as they're being processed. We will make sure that the sponsor of that particular chapter understands the timelines for having things on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of minutes.
At this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes from the regular School Board meeting of February 9, 2015, School Board Workshop, February 20, 2015, Executive Session for Collective Bargaining, February 23, 2015, and regular School Board meeting of February 23, 2015, as presented in board docs.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And at this time, we have two areas of recognition. And the first one, I'm going to ask Dr. Marilyn Doyle to come forward. We have a student from Lost Lake Elementary School that has been part of All-State Elementary Honors Choir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Moxley. Tonight, we're going to recognize Allison Richter, Lost Lake Elementary School, for All-State Elementary Honors Course. To do the honors, we're going to bring up the proud principal of Lost Lake Elementary School, Susan Pgram, to present this award.
Dr. Moxley, Chairman Steivender, and board members. Thank you so much for allowing schools to recognize those very, very special students. And that is who Allison is. I can tell you, I can remember the day that she entered kindergarten and I helped her out of her car. This sweet young little girl with an infectious smile that would just grab at your heart. She is that all-around student and I guarantee one day she will be our student representative. I'm going to allow her music teacher, Mrs. Gina Mobley, to explain exactly why we're recognizing her tonight.
Allison is a fifth grade student at Lost Lake Elementary. She's been a member of our course for the last three years. She's also on the Lost Lake News Group, the Student Council, and in the Recorder Ensemble. Outside of school, she plays 12U softball and rides horses at Big Dream Horse Club. We would also like to recognize her parents, Alan and Amy, who are here tonight, because we realize that so much of who Allison is, her abilities and her character, come from your guidance and your direction. Thank you. Allison is a great vocalist. Last spring, she was chosen to represent Lost Lake at the Lake Sumter Elementary Honor Chorus. That sparked her interest in trying out for the Florida All-State Elementary Honor Chorus. All-State Honor Chorus rehearsals and concerts are held during the Florida Music Educators Association Convention in Tampa every January. This year, students had the opportunity to work with Dr. Student Susan Brumfield. She's an internationally recognized conductor and composer. There are over 700 applicants from over the state of Florida. Allison was one of 200 fourth and fifth grade students that were selected for this honor. What makes it special is, and such a pride for us, she was the only one in Lake County to be recognized as the All-State Elementary Honor Chorus student. We're so proud of you, Allison. She has wonderful vocal talents as well as so many other ones. We are so proud of her. Would you please accept this plaque in honor
We also would like to congratulate Allison and we'd like to have she and her teacher to come around so we can congratulate them personally. It is always a privilege and honor to recognize our young people and to share the well-rounded talents that they bring to their educational program. I especially want to thank Mrs. Mobley for her talent and her leadership. She goes above and beyond to make sure students have many opportunities to excel in the areas of fine arts and music. So if you've ever had an opportunity to go to Lost Lake and hear some of the performance of the students, you'll understand how they excel under a talented teacher. So thank you very much for being here tonight. And to her parents, thank you for supporting us in meeting the needs of your daughter. So thank you very much for being here. The next recognition is for our 60th Florida State Science and Engineering Fair, Dr., oh, okay, we have Kathleen Jarvis with us this evening to do the honors.
Thank you, Dr. Moxley. Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Moxley, it's a great pleasure that we come before you this evening, Academic Services, to recognize the students that will be spending their spring break at our State of Science Fair. We're excited about that, right, students?[904.51][904.51](laughter) None of this would be possible if it wasn't for the parents that really supported the students to ensure that they had the materials and the time and the support to complete their projects. So at this time, if we have any parents in the audience, if you could please stand and be recognized for your support of our students.[924.61][924.61](applause) Also, if there are any teachers and administrators in the audience that have helped support our students, all putting in all those long hours and providing that extra support, if you could please stand and be recognized.[944.41][944.41](applause) So Lake County students showed off their STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math capabilities, at the Lake Regional Science Fair in February, on February 21st at Taveri's Middle School. There were over 21 judges that volunteered their time to judge 124 projects that our students represented, over 12 middle and high schools within our district. Not only did we have support from parents, teachers, and also administrators, we had huge community support where they donated over $2,000 with various cash prizes and other incentives for students to participate in the science fair. So if we have any community members, any businesses that help support the science fair, if you could stand and be recognized this evening. We can still give them a round of applause.[1000.01][1000.01](applause) So without further ado, let's start the recognition. First, would like to recognize Kate Beeson from Eustace High School under the leadership of Ms. Nancy Velez and her teacher sponsor, Ms. Terry Goolsbee. Kate, Katie, if you could come forward and receive Also, we would like to recognize Isabella Guinta from Yumitilla Middle School under the leadership of Mr. Kelly Sanders and her sponsoring teacher, which is now my fabulous program specialist, Ms. Sonya Blackstone. If you could come on up, Isabella.[1042.11][1042.11](applause) Also, we would like to recognize Brianna Garcia from Wendy Hill Middle School under the leadership of Ms. Amy Cockroft and her sponsoring teacher, Kim Schultz. If you could come forward, please, Brianna.[1057.11][1057.11](applause) We would also like to recognize Nick Bentley. He is a senior this year and he has been able to participate in science fair so many years. So we're going to miss Nick as he goes off to college. But Nick will be representing Yumitilla High School under the leadership of Mr. Randy Campbell and his sponsoring teacher is Melissa Guinta.[1081.41][1081.41](applause) We also have with us this evening is Bryce Buchanan and he is here from Gray Middle School under the leadership of Ms. Pam Shatnew and his teacher is Kim Schultz. If you could join us, Bryce.[1097.41][1097.41](applause) Also, Luke Burris from Taveri's Middle School under the leadership of Ms. Trelle Mott, his sponsoring teacher, Patrick Rogers. If you could join us up front, Luke.[1112.33][1112.33](applause) And Piper Cox from Claremont Middle School under the leadership of Mr. Steve Benson, with sponsoring teacher Elizabeth Bannas. If you could come on up, Piper.[1128.51][1128.51](applause) And also, we would like to recognize the students that were not able to join us this evening in no particular order. We have Ashley Crop from Yumitilla Middle School under the leadership of Mr. Kelly Sanders and her sponsoring teacher, Jennifer Keller. Also, we have Rishi Bastello. He will be representing us at International Science Fair and he's done this for several years in the past. And he is from East Ridge High School under the leadership of Ms. Julie Llewellyn. But he is also sponsored by Wendy Hill Middle School under the leadership of Ms. Amy Cockroft and Mr. Dennis Doherty. We're no stranger to Mr. Doherty is his sponsor. That has helped him get to international seven years in a row. So we're really proud of Rishi. Also, we have Hannah Faircloth from Yumitilla High School. I do believe her proud principal, Mr. Randy Campbell, is here with us this evening to be recognized as well for his support with helping Hannah get to state. And her teacher that helped her was Melissa Guinta as well. And then we have Lauren Schneider, which is Kate's partner. They did a group project. She couldn't be with us this evening and she's also at Eustace High School under the leadership of Ms. Nancy Velez and Terry Goolsbee as the sponsor. So if we could also congratulate the students that couldn't join us this evening.[1211.71][1211.71](applause) So students, if you could hold your certificate out front so Mr. Payne could get your picture. And afterwards, you will be recognized by the board and Dr. Moxley. So we'll have you come around for a nice handshake, all right? And congratulations again to everyone.[1231.71][1231.71](inaudible)[1233.11][1233.11](applause)
Yeah, back in February, on a Saturday evening, we got to celebrate the science fair projects at our fair that we conducted and these students shined along with many others that were participated. And I know that there's a lot of investment and time and research that is done and what a valuable experience. So thank you, parents. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, administrators, for supporting this initiative because we do see our students really excel in the areas of STEM. So good luck to our students as they go on to further compete and we know that they will represent Lake County well.
Okay, I'm going to give them a second to exit the room. Our next item is public input. If you have not filled out a card, you need to do so right now and bring it up to Ms. Challenger. Our first public comment card is Carolyn Van Dyken.
I figured somebody had turned in some cards before I did. I just have a quick question for you. I understand that tonight you're adopting 10.01, the Pearson versus MyMath. I had heard about this a while back and had questioned about the parent input. Understood that you had reached out to the schools and asked for SAC members. I reached out to my school and said, "Did you send any SAC members?" And they said, "No, we weren't notified in time. We weren't given enough time to notify our parents to come out and participate." I was very disappointed in that. But also, last year, the governor signed into law, it's House Bill 864, says it requires districts to convene a public hearing to receive public comment on recommended instruction materials. And as far as I know right now, there's been no public hearing. This is a consent agenda item and not a public hearing. Am I correct?
We'll have someone come up and address that.
Okay. That's my concern. It would just give us some opportunity for parents who weren't able, weren't given the opportunity by their school to participate, to participate. And it could be that nobody shows up, but it's still at the same time, it was law put on that was signed into order to allow parents to give more input on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Dyken.[1424.33][1424.33](noise) It's up to you. We'll just go ahead and do them all and then go back to this. Jane Irwin.[1433.71][1433.71](noise)
They got to follow mama. I got a following.[1464.01][1464.01](laughter) Good evening. My name's Jane Irwin and I'm the parent of two boys, kindergarten, first grader at Round Lake. And I'm here tonight to talk about the EOCs and the shroud of mystery that surrounds them. I'm a sub in Lake County Schools and I've talked to a lot of teachers and almost to a person. Not one of them knows anything about these things. No information has been disseminated to them of content or even procedure or anything. And I don't know, I just find that highly problematic as a parent. But even more so, the larger problem, however, is how inappropriate. I feel that K through 5 students having to take even more tests and eating up even more instructional time. Honestly, it's a little baffling to me how we can conscientiously administer final exams to children under 12 years old, particularly K through 2. We're all aware, well, I would think most of us are aware, how Orange County stepped up in support of their students. But just in case you didn't, document number one just kind of outlines the memorandum from Dr. Jenkins, and I'll just hit the bullet points really quickly. There'll be no formal EOC in social studies for K through 5. There's no EOC in science for K through 4. And there's no EOC in art, music, or PE for K through 4. And all those assessments are going to be done through traditional teacher methods. Imagine that. So, we are asking that Lake County stand united as a whole to support our kids and say enough is enough with these dag on assessments. We need to adopt these same adjustments or something very similar and give our kids some relief. I have every, otherwise, I have every intention of refusing these tests for my kindergarten and first grader. They're completely, completely unnecessary. So in closing, as a parent and taxpayer, I'm aware of the waste of time and energy and money that these tests consume. But I thought maybe every other taxpayer in here might want to know just how much of our tax dollars are being wasted on turning teachers into test proctors. So on document two, it's a fantastic little document by the Florida Educators Association. It's a pretty interesting little diagram. Ignore this little box down here. What we need to look at is the pencil in the middle, the dark brown section at the right-hand end with a red box around it that says parts of 27 days that are testing, okay? So I'm just going to do an exercise in estimations here. Say there's maybe 2,500 teachers here in Lake County and those folks are making about 150 bucks a day. And we're going to use that 27 days. That, ladies and gentlemen, is 10.125 million dollars, million, that these teachers, part of their salaries are being used to monitor tests instead of doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara Foster.
Thank you, Dr. Moxley, board members, for letting me speak to you today. I'm a parent that thinks, knows, that FSA is not appropriate tool to which assess my child. How can this test even be considered as an assessment of my child's abilities? It can't. No one that matters ever gets to see this test. Not her parents, not her teacher, not her reading specialist, not her principal, and not her ESC coordinator. So why give it? It's simple. Money. You are stealing, no selling, my child's individuality, self-expression, confidence, willing to learn, and intelligence. Let me explain. You took her individuality and self-expression by forcing, yes, forcing her into a uniform for $10 per child. You stole her confidence by using data charts in the classroom that showed her and everyone else in the class that she wasn't as smart as other kids. On the thought that if they see they need to do better, they will do better. That is adult thinking. A child's thinking is to give up. Well, congratulations. You are succeeding in encouraging her to give up. You took her disability diagnosis away by giving inflated grades of 50 because an F is an F. With reading scores consistently in the teens, this policy would have done damage by promoting her into a grade she wasn't academically ready for. If I didn't speak up and pitch a fit to have my child evaluated, her grades adjusted to accurately reflect her mastery, she would have been promoted. Kids make those scores for a reason. There's an issue that needs to be addressed. Inflating them is just wrong and as far as I'm concerned, it's lying. If I had to wait until third grade to address her issue as told by the school, then the past two years of reading help she is now getting, she wouldn't finish until fifth grade. Way too late. And you wonder why our schools are failing. My child has done everything you, the state, has asked of her. She's tested and tested to the point where she doesn't care anymore. Again, congratulations on killing my child's desire to learn and to know that failing is learning. learning. But what can be expected from a system that values only what can be measured? Now it is time for you to do something for her. Develop a student portfolio that evaluates the actual work done in the classroom, developed by the teacher and not some other barrage of impossible-to-pass tests. The lessons that are taught in class should already be aligned to the standards. Her passing that assessment with a score of a 70, as directed by the state, should be enough to show her mastery of the subject matter, not some test. It's time for you to advocate for her. You know this test is inappropriately developmentally for our children. Experts, teachers, and parents all over the country know this. Why don't you and the state?
Thank you. Stuart Clatt. Well, that's good. That way I can turn my neck this way.
That's right. See, I did it just for you. Good evening, Dr. Moxley, Chair Stevender, school board members. I think Jane gave you a copy of this little document. Let me explain this. As we talked to some of our legislators, we found that they had a hard time understanding the concept that we don't have the infrastructure to test all of our students at the same time. And so, we took, and I'll talk this little corner here, but I know, like, in my case, I may have a lesson where 20% of my students may be gone on every single day during the testing period, which means when they come back, I have to reteach a lesson. Or I have folks getting ahead and it gets to be a real mess. And then you have schools that have media centers that are closed for the entire second semester. The little chart in the corner kind of shows that St. Lucy High School, one of them, it's an A or B high school, they do have good infrastructure. But the movement that their students have to do on a day when they're giving test and going into holding periods, going into another classroom, computer classes having to be canceled or relocated. So it's not just the tests themselves. The top indicates in a high school, 17 different tests that are given during the course of a semester or of a year. The multiple pages are multiple days that that test may be given. And that doesn't count a lot of the progress monitoring testing, which is optional to a school district. But most school districts decide to do the progress monitoring testing. There's also the EPAT testing, which is required before they take a computerized test. So there's additional tests. But this is generally what has to happen on any given day when there's testing going on. And administrators have to figure out who's going to go where, who's gonna cover this class, who's gonna supervise these individuals. And so, this chart was an attempt to show legislators that it's not just testing, it's all of the related aspects. The lost instructional time, the moving around, having to account for everything. So feel free, I've got extra copies here that I can get to you.
There wasn't enough to begin with, so I need...
Then I have extra copies.
Thank you. I was gonna ask you, was it effective? Did the legislators actually, with the visual?
Well...
This is on my time, so don't...
The House ended up passing their bill, which basically didn't cut any testing at all. The Senate Education Committee is not meeting this week, so there's still some input. I know when I met with legislators, having to tell my own personal story was helpful. But having this chart is helpful as well.
Okay, and that's...
Because a visual is always good to see.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Vance Yoakam.
Vance Yoakam, I write a blog, fiscalrangers.com. David, I'll be using the slides also or the projector. Now, I think you've seen this in the news. This is the flag of ISIS. And what I wanted to do is I'm gonna give you a link between ISIS and the world history textbooks that you are giving to your students from Pearson, McGraw-Hill. Very top line there is what's known as the Shahada. The Shahada is the saying that Muslims say to become a Muslim. Here's an article, you probably can't read it too well, but it, I'm not gonna read the Shahada, but this is, clearly says that all you have to do is recite that term. It's about one and a half sentences long. And that it mentions Shahada about three places. This came off of a website that is from the Islamic religion. So now, this is the sixth-grade world history book that you have from Pearson. Now, I mentioned at the last meeting that your staff cooperated and let me look at that book, didn't put any barriers in place. I also had one of the staff tell me that they don't really think a lot of the teachers use the full 30-page chapter on Islam for their classes. And so I'm taking the approach that maybe many of the teachers are smart enough not to do that. But I do believe that the state is the one that came up with the books. They put them on the list. Your staff had to choose from the books that were on the list. And I know I've been told that they thought this book was the best one. And of course, they weren't looking at this issue, they were looking at the overall book. So... It, the way that it's justified in that book is that this shows the Florida generation, next-generation sunshine state standards. It lists it right there on the top. All of them are generic standards. Every standard that's in that chapter is a generic standard. The publisher used those as a basis for then creating an entire Islam chapter, in my opinion. There's not one of them that says you gotta learn about Islam and the five pillars. However, in the 10th-grade book, there are about seven of them that specifically say that they are supposed to have it, okay? Now, this book has a page on the five pillars of Islam. And they use the term here for pillar one of belief, but really, the first pillar is the Shahada, okay? So they will require that people talk about that. This page shows that a student assignment for going to an Islamic community center and learning how to do things with them and to write a report.
Vance.
This one is a Saudi Arabia flag. It also has the Shahada in it. And that's what I wanted to point out to you is that I think that you, as a board and administration, you've got to be reading the newspapers. You've got to have been seeing where Muslims came out and said they wanna kill 100 military and they posted their addresses and everything in the US. And that this is a very real danger. And I was in Iraq for two years. I know how dangerous it is. And I wanna point out that anything that your administration or teachers are doing to educate students to think that this religion is okay, I really resent. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last one is Dr. Kristy Burns.
Hi. Hello. I'm Dr. Kristy Burns. I'm the co-chair of the Parent Teacher Citizen Testing Coalition and a spokesperson for Lake County Healthiest Schools. First, I'd like to thank Superintendent Moxley and the members of the district that met with Lori Baxley and I last week. We parents really appreciate having our voices heard. I'd like to say that we were very pleased to see that you adjusted the student progression plan to reflect changes in Section L so that children in middle school and high school will not be placed in remedial classes based solely on their FSA test scores. Instead, teachers, parents, and guidance counselors will be able to consider all of their educational background before placing children in honors or remedial classes. We're really pleased about that. One thing that is of concern and may have just been a simple oversight is that in the progression plan for third grade, the section about good cause exemptions for children in the failing 19% of the FSA, the ones that will need to go through remediation, or sorry, will have to either pass good cause or be retained. The portfolio should read, that it should be, quote, "be selected by the student's teacher." I hope this was simply an oversight because I fear that it's in violation of the Florida statute, which should trump the Florida rule, which you do cite in the new draft of the progression plan. I know that Ms. Arnold was talking about reworking the portfolio to better reflect the curriculum that the children are taking so that the teachers could select appropriate passages from the Wonders Reading Series. Therefore, I think it makes sense that teacher-selected be added back into the student progression plan. Thank you. And I have that section, and that section of the progression plan.
Thank you very much. The few items that did come up, we're gonna address those when we get to the student progression plan. Is that good? Yes, sir, under the progression plan, I mean, under the discussion tentative approval of the progression plan. Because that is part of...
No, sorry.
It's not.
Textbooks.
The textbooks.
The textbook question about the hearing.
Right. Okay, go ahead and do that.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address that. I'll address two things. First of all, the parent involvement piece. There are three different ways in which we involve parents in the process. The principals nominate their school-based staff and parents and community members to serve on the district adoption committees. And many principals did so. We had four of them that actually attended the adoption training, so they were involved at that level. The second way is that schools are encouraged to share information with their SAC groups. And they're also encouraged to share the online links to the materials as well as the hard copy materials to review as well. So it is a part of our process. And we do encourage schools to do that. So that is how we involve parents in the process. There are new rules that do guide public and parent input to the adoption process. Those are new rules. So we're just in the process of rolling a lot of those out with this adoption. You are correct, there is a public review process for 20 days prior to this meeting. So if you go back to the main district website, on March the 3rd, there was an entry there for "District Selects Instructional Materials," I think was the title of it. And on there, it has direct links to all of the materials that we're asking for you to approve this evening. That is in the new statute that we do that. So they are links to all of the materials that you are voting to accept. The second piece of that new statute is that following your approval of those new books, then we have a 30-day open window in which parents and guardians of public school students can give input on what you all have recommended. There's a form that they fill out that will post once I know if these have been recommended by all of you. Then parents will have a chance to weigh in further if they have concerns on what we've moved forward with. And I will bring that back to you within 30 days after that 30-day window. And we will have an actual public hearing on any concerns that have been raised. And then that will be up to you all, how you wish to proceed. If you wish to address those and send us back to some conversation, or you're not obligated to make any changes, but I am obligated to bring those before you in a public forum.
Mr. Johnson.
No one's asked about this before, so this is the first time that I've looked at this statute. Although I did see, I do recall this particular one because it basically completely revised 1006.283. It was a session law that was passed last year. I think what was just said was correct, except it also requires an open notice school board hearing to receive public comment on the recommended instructional materials. I assumed you were gonna tell us that that's what the meeting this afternoon was supposed to be.
That was part of it. There's two parts. That part where it comes before is a discussion. And then, once they're officially adopted and recommended, then there's another open window on that side to give input to what you've officially adopted for the district. There's two of them.
And they're also, I mean, they're supposed to be rule, I was trying to get online to see what our rule says about that or our board policy, but...
We are in the process of trying to get those updated. We have been waiting for some additional clarification from the state, and so...
But do we have a process in writing somewhere that if someone wanted to come look, they could see what the process was and read about it?
I don't follow you.
The process that you're describing...
Yes, that is what I'm in the...
Needs to be known to the public.
Right. And that's why I've been putting those notices up on the webpage. That's what the state, that's where the state told us to post those. They have to be on the website with open links to the materials and to the documents that apply.
Mr. Johnson, you need a few minutes to look at that. We'll move on and then come back.
Yeah, give me just a couple minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's go.
And by the way, we oughta go ahead, regardless of what I suggest to do, we oughta pull it from the consent agenda and have it as part of the discussion agenda and allow people specifically to talk about it. I mean, there's no reason not to. And that makes sure that we've complied with those requirements.
Okay, no problem. All right, reports. Okay, we're done with public input? Okay, then our first report is our student representative, Kelsey Collins.
Thank you again for allowing me to be here. I thank God and my parents, as well as the administration of Lake, not Lake County School Board, but also my administration at South Lake High School. The first thing that I would like to talk about is what it means to be an Eagle. And in order to be an Eagle, you must be willing to excel. You must be willing to excel in any area that you place yourself in. You must be willing to excel in your academics, in your programs, to excel in your homework, in your classwork, to make sure that you're striving for excellence, as well as academics. As a student and being an Eagle, your academics are an important feature into why you're in school. You're in school to learn. And our teachers make sure that we get the best education that we can, as well as to guide us in a way that helps us to prepare for our future. We also learn leadership skills and, as well as place an effort to have the best experience as an Eagle. And then you soar by making sure that you trust in your teachers and, more importantly, in yourself to do the very best that you can in school. Some different things that have happened more recently since the last time I spoke are Silver Sisters Quartet from our chorus, Stephanie Hufafinger, Irene Orcasitas, and Megan Murphy, as well as Marissa Weiss, all received a superior rating at state level. And Marissa was selected to sing on the honors recital. HOSA has just finished their penny wars and collected over $800 for the Lefoma Cause. Their, HOSA will have, send 23 students out of 40 to go to states this Thursday, and they will find out who will go to nationals on Saturday. There are 140 students, over 140 students in the Health Academy. Right now, they track in basketball teams, I'm sorry, track in baseball teams are continuing to thrive on the fields as well as their tracks. Students are excited to go to prom and the different trips that are being offered, such as Island of Adventures for those who meet the qualifications, such as a 3.0 grade point average, passing the HOPE classes and other criteria that you have to meet in order to go on that trip. There's also senior trips coming up, as well as other different club trips that each student is really excited to go on based on their hard work inside their classrooms and in their clubs. One thing that I was able to participate in about two weeks ago, it was about two weeks ago that I participated in our expo for the incoming freshmen. There will actually be another expo next month. And what we did was we gathered all of the different programs... of the different programs and clubs, and we assembled in our cafeteria and allowed for the different students that will be attending South Lake High School next year to have a chance to understand what we do at South Lake and to get excited about the experience that they'll have when they come on campus. So next month, there hasn't been an official date set yet, but we do know that next month sometime there will be another expo coming up. Also, the band and color guard are preparing for their performance assessments tomorrow. They will be leaving, the color guard will be leaving for their performance assessments, and we wish them good luck as well. We also just recently had seven football players sign to play football at the college level. Five also were accepted on, to scholarships to different schools around the country as well, so a total of twelve students playing football or going for academic success. Another thing is for the students preparing for graduation, so many of us are, you can see the excitement that's around campus. They are prepared. There's actually a little more than sixty days left, so I'm excited and nervous all at the same time. So yeah, these are my last few weeks of singing and being fun in the hallway, so it's really, it's kind of, it's really exciting, as well as sort of a sad process to go through, but all the while, every senior is trying to make sure that they're meeting those last-minute deadlines, finishing up classes and those sorts of things, so everyone's excited about that as well. And the last thing I want to leave you with is a quote that I say at the end of every school day when I finish the announcements, and that's to remember you are destined to rise above the standard and soar above your circumstance if you get your mind right. Keep it blue and silver eagles.
Very nice. Thank you very much for that outstanding report, and I know that being a senior, it's exciting and kind of scary at the same time, so we wish you very much success in the years to come. You have already shown great success in your high school career, and we know you're going to soar and continue to do that, so thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Our next report comes from our Teacher of the Year finalist, Julie Forghee.
I'm so proud to be here tonight to represent Windy Hill Middle School. We pride ourselves on initiating personalized learning and Bring Your Own Device. Both programs are working very well with our students, and more teachers are signing up to expand the personalized learning program next year. One language arts teacher who is teaching personalized learning in her classroom said, "The focus of personalized learning in my class is primarily the content and student tracking. Students are able to work on their assignments based on skill and take a post-test to evaluate their knowledge of the skill. They acquire the assignments, resources, and tests on Edmodo and document this information on their tracking sheets. The challenge for the students is taking responsibility of their goals and work progress. Bring Your Own Device is something that is essential in order to operate personalized learning. The students work very hard with their devices, and for the most part, they stay on task. Personalized learning is a necessity in my classroom. I teach middle school students with moderate to severe autism. They range developmentally from preschoolers through second grade, so we really have to personalize everything for them. Half of my class is nonverbal and uses an iPad with Prolocator Go in order to communicate. Another student uses sign language. I use mainstream students as peer buddies to give my students the one-on-one assistance that they need. Aside from teaching the core subjects, we also work on vocational skills in my class. One of those is delivering copies to the teachers. The copy center will send them a jackrabbit and bring them to school. When they arrive, we label them, we put on our aprons, which are their uniforms, and we deliver the copies to the teachers. Now, it sounds a lot easier than it is. Students with autism, a lot of times, have different sensory issues. At the beginning of the year, a lot of them wouldn't tolerate wearing an apron, so that was a struggle, just to keep them, get them to keep it on. And they'd do a good job, they'd have their apron on, we'd get to the classroom, and they were still learning the concept of handing the copies to the teachers. Some poor teachers had to catch those copies because they went flying. But after many, many months of practicing, they've polished it. The aprons stay on, and the copies get handed to the teachers. The other thing we do is team up with our Sunshine Committee. On Friday afternoons, teachers and staff have the opportunity to order lunch from various restaurants in Claremont. When the food arrives, my students put on white aprons and, again, go deliver them to the faculty and staff. It usually works out very well unless it's San Jose's Day, then we have to be careful because sometimes the chips tend to get sampled along the way. This is a really exciting time of the year for us because we are starting to go on community-based instruction trips. Most of the world calls them field trips, but for our students, it's a way for them to learn social skills and life skills by going out and doing things in the community. And we're fortunate, we team up with Lost Lake Elementary School for a lot of these trips so that we can maximize the dollars on buses and go on more trips, and I get the advantage of meeting my future students, and Lost Lake gets the advantage of getting to reunite with our students that have gone off to middle school. One of my favorite trips was last year when we went to Olive Garden. We entered, and they gave us all aprons and hairnets to wear, and then took us back in the kitchen. While we were back there, we got a tour, we got to see how the food was made, and then the students had the opportunity to help make salad and breadsticks that they'd done, turned around, and ate for lunch. So that was, that was one of my favorites. Another thing that we do is we like to bake or cook in the classroom, and following a recipe is important for their skills of being independent, so we'll make our grocery list, and we'll go to Publix, and we'll grocery shop, and then we'll come back to school, and we'll make the food that we just shopped for. I personally don't believe that self-contained students should not have interaction with their non-disabled peers. It's actually a huge pet peeve of mine, so I like to try to do the exact opposite whenever possible. I encourage my students to attend school games, dances, and plays, and anything else that the school is hosting. By doing this, I see an enormous growth in my students' social skills since school started in August. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share the exciting things that are going on in my classroom and at Windy Hill Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing. It's always a pleasure to have the insight that you bring every day to your classroom and for us to have a sneak preview of that, so thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. We will bring a focus on teaching and learning report at another board meeting, so we'll move on to school board member committee reports. Does any school board member have a report from anything they've been to? Okay.
Sales tax, look for an invitation coming out. It'll be for the one cent and the briefing of the Bruce Barcello survey and how we're going to be marketing the one cent. So it's going to be at Mission Inn, twenty dollars, March thirtieth, I think. We'll look for that invitation.
Okay, thank you. All right, attorney report? Would you like to?
I'm going to do this when you get to it.
Okay, all right.
At this time, then, I would like to recommend the Consent Agenda, items eight point oh one through eight point oh seven, nine point oh one through nine point oh five, ten point oh two through ten point one six, moving ten point oh one to the Discussion Agenda.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. What is your, is there a motion?
Sir, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Dr. Moxley? And the emergency item. I deem it an emergency. You just approved on the Consent Agenda, the field trip to Key Club's International's two thousand and fifteen District Education and Leadership Conference at the Rose and Shingle Creek Resort, April ninth through the twelfth. We do not have a board meeting until that time, so at this time, I'd like to recommend approval of Umatilla High School's request for an overnight field trip to attend this event, as we did the other schools. Is there a motion, June?
Sir, move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Dr. Moxley? Then, moving to ten point oh one? Ten point oh one, yes. I am going to ask Dr. Roberts to come back up. We're doing ten point oh one, the textbooks.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. You need to make the entire presentation on the textbooks that you did this afternoon. Okay, so I think what we will do is, that presentation that was in this afternoon's board docs or?
I also have it on a jump drive, so whatever, it's easier to pull up.
If you have it on the jump drive, let's go ahead and put it in, and Mr. Davis will help you. And thank you, Ms. Roberts, for being prepared. And for those of you who don't know who David Walker is, he's been doing this quite some time for the Board of County Commissioners. He was in the newspaper recently, talking about all the great work he's done over the years and taking care of this system. And he's a Tefarri's High School graduate.
Are you trying to make it full screen? Ready? Okay. All righty. The information I'm sharing with you in this presentation is the culmination of the work of four months' worth of work by many dedicated educators. This work represents the work of elementary and secondary curriculum services and academic services, one hundred and thirteen school-based staff who participated in district instructional adoption committees, and numerous elementary and secondary teachers who actually participate in the adoption process at their school site. So they're all to be commended because this is an arduous task to take on, on top of everything else they're doing. They've done a great job with that. Some guiding principles that guide our textbook adoption process. I know those are going to be hard for you to read. I apologize. Do you want me to read them to you all so you can see them?
No.
I'll read through them quickly. Can I see them okay? The main thing that I, the top one speaks to that this is a process based on Florida statute and district school board policy. So these aren't academic services rules, these aren't Stacy Roberts's rules, these are actual statutes and policies that guide our process. We review items that are on the state bid list for review this year for math. Because those materials were a few years older than we would like, we did go off of the state list and reviewed Pearson and Vision two point oh, as well as Ready Math, which accompanies the iReady math curriculum. The content standards are addressed at the state, the district, and the school level, so we had our eyes on that due to the more rigorous standards and the expectations in our schools. Every school had the opportunity to participate on the committee and did so. Every school participated in the adoption, in the voting process as well. And as I shared with you previously, this was a culminating project of many departments. Curriculum, IT, and ESE were all at the table through this process so that we're ensuring that the needs of multiple students are being addressed through the adoption. You'll notice the second to last bullet, only publications with print and internet-based components are reviewed in Lake County. That is because we have a statute that takes at least fifty percent of our instructional materials dollars are spent on digital resources every year. And so to ensure compliance with that, we do not look at anything that doesn't have digital components with it, and we've done that for many years. That was best practices for us many years ago, so we've continued that. And just a reminder that textbooks are just one resource of sporting instruction and assessment. The next chart, I'll walk you through the adoption process that is laid out in this chart, the first, the first column being the Adoption Committee Training. That was training on three different occasions. We trained one hundred and thirteen school-based personnel. A hundred of those were teachers. Seventy-two were general ed, classroom teachers, and twenty-eight of them were ESE teachers. We had nine instructional coaches and four parents attend those trainings. We also held Publishers Showcase. You can see those reflected in the next column over, and those were opportunities for teachers and parents to actually come and meet with the vendors, review the materials. A lot of additional samples were given away at that point. Those were attended by ninety-one participants. Then you can see we had the voting that took place on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of February. We had a district review of those results on March the second, and then it went to, you can see, executive cabinet review, the online public input, which I spoke about previously, how it was posted on the district website in accordance with the new statute. And then you'll see tonight's school board meeting, and that we have to certify with Department of Education by April first in terms of our purchasing decisions. Next slide, oh, next slide, these are the voting results for the elementary math series. There was a tie. Every school voted for choice one, two, and three. For math, they looked at four publications, and there was a tie vote for choice one between Pearson and Vision Math two point oh and My Math. We utilized the textbook survey data to look at the seven items that we added to the survey to look at the rigor. There were thirty-six items on the survey, and they were rated from not at all meeting the item to thoroughly meeting the item, and we looked at those top two categories, those that were rated highly and thoroughly for these seven criteria. You can see that six out of seven of those items, Pearson and Vision Math scored higher. The one area that My Math did score higher was topic sequence, and that's the order in which topics are introduced in the series. I've been assured by Melissa Oell, our star elementary math program specialist, that that topic sequence is easily addressed regardless of the material we chose because we can align that through the curriculum blueprint, so she didn't see that as a major hindrance.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So when we, when we've got it narrowed down to two, was there any thought or consideration of doing a runoff vote, runoff election for those two? Because, you know, I wonder if, you know, people who, you know, can't get their third choice, if they would have picked My Math versus Pearson? I don't know.
Our process works that we go back and review the data that we had, and because this data was so clear, we felt comfortable moving forward with what had been voted on and recommended. Had this data been closer or skewed in some way that, the district policy says that the curriculum department reviews those results to concur or, what's the opposite of that? Concur or refute what has been presented? And when they saw this additional data that supported that, we felt comfortable with moving forward, bringing those recommendations to you.
The one thing we were advised earlier was that we should also consider what the, what's the next category down, adequately meeting the evaluation?
Yes.
When those percentages are factored in, is there still a gap between Invision Math and My Math, or do those numbers end up looking similar?
I believe they look similar, but I would have to go back to be a hundred percent. I don't want to say that for certain without looking at that. But we were looking at, is we're looking at those more rigorous standards to align to the type of instruction that we're expecting to see. You know, we really felt like we were looking at what does highly and thoroughly look like because adequate is where we've been living, so that was.
I understand. It was just suggested earlier that, you know, we.
I'd be happy to go back and look at that and bring that forward back to you. I have no problem with that. Anything else? Anything else? Okay. Next slide. These are the voting results for English Language Arts, 6 through 12. These were very clear there and concise of what the schools voted. For middle school, English Language Arts series, 10 of 10 schools selected the Houghton Mifflin Harcourt Collection series. Same at the high school, 8 of 8 schools selected Houghton Mifflin Harcourt Collection series as choice 1. For advanced placement, 7 out of 8 schools chose the AP Language and Composition book. I didn't, I didn't lay that out very well. These are both Bedford-Freeman texts. I apologize. I'm missing a couple of words there. The Bedford-Freeman text was the top vote getter in both of those categories for AP, which is the same series we currently have, which we've done very well with. And the last slide, this is our proposed adoption schedule for the next five years. The state of Florida just released their adopt, their revised adoption schedule in December. They made several changes to their plan based on the new standards. And so, we have not adopted anything officially for the last two years. We were awaiting the new standards and what the assessments would look like. And so, this is our attempt to get back on target, to more closely align with the state. A note to this that is in this slide is that all of this is pending Florida Department of Education funding for instructional materials. Those allocations come down to us usually the first part of July, and we usually receive about 2.6 million for each adoption.
Okay. Questions of Ms. Roberts? Dr. Roberts? Stephanie, do you want to explain what you had said today earlier in the meeting? Because you were our liaison on the committee for the textbook.
I spoke about earlier today, the two, the two choices for math, the adoption series actually would be fine to go either way, that we did feel that they were both high-quality texts for mathematics. But what, where my sound judgment lays in is, I have several pockets where I have very, very excellent mathematics teachers at the elementary level who all agreed that the Invision text was a more rigorous, more developmentally-ready program for the students that would help them teach mathematics. And in addition to that, we have on, coming up, a summer institute that helps teachers develop professionally mathematics. So, in my mathematics opinion, that is the element that we would need that would support any text that we adopt. So, we are, we do, I think it's like 350 teachers that are slated to be trained over a course of several days with expert mathematicians, and, and that will help support whatever textbook it is that we choose to adopt, so.
Thank you. Dr. Moxley?
Mr. Johnson, do I need to put the recommendation on there first, and then you declare it public?
Yeah, let me just explain what the problem is, if I could. The problem is that we are trying to comply with the law while not having a policy that complies. Part of the law that was passed last summer was to revise your policy to reflect the things that we're doing. Now, it's more important that we're doing what the statute requires than have the policy that says we're doing what the statute requires. And when I look through what has been done so far, it looks like the first, other than not having the rule revised, and by the way, we do have an instructional selection rule in the rulebook, it's just, it doesn't have the information. When this, this statute was, was revised last summer, it was substantially rewritten, and we haven't changed the policy since then. So, our policy has how we did things in the past, which is not completely inconsistent with what the statute says. And probably the first thing we would have made a mistake on in following the statute would have been not to have this at this evening's meeting, because it does require a notice school board hearing to receive public comment, as I stated earlier. And on the notice that was provided online, it said that it will be presented at the regular meeting on March 23rd. That's this meeting, not this morning. So, fortunately, lady told us in time that we were able to correct that problem. Now, you should, if the superintendent makes a recommendation, you should open it up again to the public, anyone who wants to speak. We did have a public hearing earlier. People were, as I recall, allowed to speak if they wanted to, specifically to the instructional part as well. But with the fact that the earlier notice said that the regular meeting, I think it's important that we're doing it at this point. And I think that before we approve another instructional material, that we get the policy changed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Moxley?
At this time, I'd like to recommend approval of the instructional materials recommendations for elementary math and secondary English Language Arts, as presented by Dr. Roberts.
We need a motion?
Agreed.
And a second?
Second.
And open it up for public.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board's consideration of the issue of the approval of instructional materials?
Hi, my name's Vance Chiocombe. I knew that you were discussing it this morning. I didn't go to that meeting. My only comments are that the firm that was selected for ELA, Houghton Mifflin Harcourt, if you go back and research the ownership of that organization, it went through a lot of different changes in the last several years. And at one point, it was 45% owned by the royal family of Dubai, an Islamic country. Okay? I want to point out that that's one of their strategies, to change the education system in the United States. And I think you need to be aware of that when you determine what you're going to have used out of any materials. Secondly, is that I noticed in the adoption schedule, it was shown, I didn't see anything about U.S. history or social studies. I don't understand why there's nothing there. Was it magically incorporated into the ELA or something? And why isn't that a separate subject that is set out for the adoption? I hope that somebody can explain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Van Dyken, thank you very much for straightening this up.
I'm just trying to be a parent advocate here, and I feel like Lake County is constantly a step behind every other county, as far as even down to our student progression plan, having an emergency meeting because we need copiers, which we knew the contract was coming up. I mean, all these little things start adding up and just really, really just ticking at me every day, that, you know, we're Lake County, we should be better than everybody else in this state. And we can be better than everybody else in this state. But not having a public hearing on textbook adoption, and when I reach out to, I have friends that are in all different schools all over the county, and we had this discussion when this came out about this textbook. No, we're not teachers, but we would have liked and been involved. And when we reach out to our SAC and they say, "Oh, sorry, you know, we didn't have enough time," and, and I don't know who to believe. I don't know who to believe. I don't know if I should call my school out on that, that they're just pointing the finger at you guys, or I should point the, or, or you guys were the problem. I don't know. Again, I'm the parent, I'm always thrown in the middle, and I just want to straighten this mess up. And I can't be in a 9:30 special meeting in the morning. In fact, I was opting my kid out of FSA today. So, I was having him break the seal, picking him up, and taking him to school, taking him to work and bringing him back. So, I don't understand, I mean, the law states that it has to be a public hearing. If somebody else wanted to come, and I saw that it was closed, 50 to 50 with teachers. I respect what Ms. Luke had to say about the textbook. I understand that she's very knowledgeable in that. But it would have been nice for other people to hear that, not at 9:30 this morning, and not someone like me having to come here and point this out to you. That's all we want. We just want to hear this stuff. And I couldn't stream it this morning either. I thought that I'd be able to stream the 9:30 meeting. I couldn't find a way to do it. And if it's not live streamed this morning, then that means anything that was discussed this morning would have not been seen by the public before you voted on it tonight. So, that's another thing you need to look into. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Dr. Moxley?
Yes, the next item for discussion is tentative approval of the 2014-15 Student Progression Plan. I'm going to invite Janet Bias, Carmen Arnold, to please come forward. Actually, the item from my report tonight does fold into some of the things that have been spoken about, so we might want to combine that all together. I'm happy to do that. I do have one other item of things we do do right in Lake County and have been nationally recognized in a national publication for initiatives for Lake County schools that I'd like to share with you tonight.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Moxley. We're going to break it down into a couple of sections. I did a workshop on this, as you remember, six, seven weeks ago. Most of what we workshop is intact, and it has not been changed. But we have taken the opportunity to go in and address a couple of things that came to our attention that the board or upper administration wanted us to, to take a look at. So, the first thing I want to call to your attention is the attendance zones language. And that is on my page nine, but I'm going to tell you, it might not be on your page nine, because it depends on what printer prints it, okay, as to how they set the margins. But it is E, and it would be around page nine, School District Attendance Zone Residency on the student progression. What I'm handing out here to you now is a chart that I used about a month ago to pull together what districts near us, and then I added Osceola today at, at a request. But I looked at the others to see what they are using when they determine their attendance zones. So, as you go through the columns, you're going to see Lake Policy 5.20, which we're working to get Lake Student Progression Plan and the Lake Policy to join in, then Marion, Orange, Osceola, Polk, and so on. As you can see, what I did then along the right-hand side is how many people, I did not, I never gave Lake two votes. So, whatever, if we had it in both places, it only got, as you can see, like utility bill deposit, of the seven counties, I looked at, all seven used that as a possibility. Okay? And you can see that there's a plethora of things that are used, a variety of different things that are used. And then if you go to the very bottom, and you're going to see there, it says number needed. Our policy previously was that we needed one. Marion County's policy has three options. The first two options each need two verifications, and their third option takes a third verification. Orange County needs four, Osceola two, Polk two, Seminole three, Volusia one, okay, as of their current data on their website. So, I took that information and came back to our policy to try to determine what looked to be kind of a, in conjunction, in line with what other districts are doing. So, we came up with the idea that we would, instead of one, since many of the districts are two, although Volusia County remains at one, to go with the option of two of the following documents. The other thing that we did was make some, we kind of ranked them in terms of what types of information do we think people are most apt to have that really proves residency? We made sure it said things like with the current physical address, so that we were very clear in our language there. With, with few exceptions, I think we have worked quite well with districts. Do we occasionally have a family that isn't residing within the district that they're supposed to or attending? Certainly, we do. But for the most part, our families can provide these types of documents. So, we went with the types of things that other districts are using that seem to be the most easily accessible and yet show proof of residency in that area. So, that was one of the major things that we did there. Okay? In addition, and, and Ms. Carmen is here, and she's going to talk a little bit about the elementary level. But I wanted to go on, and I know it was mentioned tonight by public input, in both our middle and high school section with the, with regards to remediation, because there was a lot of parent, as well as school people's concern with regards to students who would take the Florida standards assessments, and then those would be used in isolation on a year when they are still gathering baseline data. So, we did enter into both the middle school section, which is an addition since the last time I saw you. And the middle school section is on or near page 46 under remediation, and the high school section is for you on or near page 78, and it's under students who score a level one or two, which is under remediation. And what the, the main line there that I want, and it is the same sentence in both places, but it says, "The 2014-15 school year is a baseline data collection year for the Florida standard assessment. As a result, student scores on the FSA should be used in conjunction with other performance measures when student scores on the FSA should not, when determining the need for placement and remedial courses." So, if a student performs poorly this year on baseline data, but we have other evidence that would show that we have had a student in the past, and by middle and high school, we should have lots of different indicators on students that we can take a look at, so that we don't have a student performing poorly because we still do not have good baseline data. Okay? So, that it isn't one time can really hurt that student. It gives us some flexibility to look at, as the student as a whole, as opposed to just how they performed within one, one meeting. Okay? So, for those couple of sections, those are really the only additions to middle school and high school. And like I say, we did take this opportunity to go ahead and, and look at the residency requirements and make sure that we looked like we were more in line with what other districts around us are doing. Okay? Beyond that, then, we worked collectively, kind of with the district assessment piece, and then Ms. Arnold certainly took the lead with regards to elementary.
You have a blue folder in front of you?
Yes.
We will go right to the topic that's got our interest. You will find in there, I'm going to do a quick overview, and then I'll go into promotion of students who score a level two or above, which is general ed, and then children who do not score so fair on the FSA and score a level one, we'll go into good cause and the pieces that are there and what's in the student progression. The first thing you're going to see in your portfolio, I mean, your folder, is that, yes, portfolio assessments can begin at any time during the school year. And what I would like to say about that point is, when a student is identified possibly at risk, is when a teacher has the choice, along with a parent, to begin this process. Starting this process in August and September, I would encourage that they waited later in the year, simply because the student hasn't had an opportunity to be taught the third-grade standards. So, they do need time to saturate these skills and apply them before we start expecting them to produce a portfolio assessment piece. So, that was one of the pieces that I have said to different parents who have called me and asked me specifically, why can't they start at the beginning of school? I said, "You can, but what I would caution you about is, the child hasn't even been taught those skills." So, that was one of the pieces we talked through. In this chart, it's very simple here, and this is on our web for parents and the public to look at. It breaks it down. If a student scores a level two or higher on FSA, it's promoted to fourth. A student does not score a level two or higher on the ELA FSA, the student must take one, SAT 10, or two. The score, the student who scores a 45 on the SAT 10 goes to fourth grade. Student who does not score a 45 on the SAT 10 is offered an opportunity to go into, or may attend, a summer reading camp. And portfolios can go right along with any time, with any of this timeline. The student takes the SAT 10 before summer reading camp, and it has an opportunity after reading camp. So, when you go along the flow of this, and a student may work on a portfolio, if they don't finish it, they may have the opportunity to take that into the summer reading camp and finish it. That's always been a possibility. Summer camp has never been mandatory. It's always you may attend, you're encouraged to attend, because kids have scored more successful, the ones that had been through summer reading camp that then took a FSA at the end, than those who had not had the extra intensity of the summer reading camp. So, there was more success there. If a student does not attend summer reading camp, that's okay. They'll have an opportunity to come back and take the SAT 10. They just need to let us know, and they can come back and take a SAT 10 on the same day as the other students do. This year, students who attend the summer reading camp will be given an opportunity to start and complete another portfolio. It will give them another opportunity. And after speaking with Dr. Moxley and the group of parents that came in, Ms. Burns, I will explain to you how we've looked at the matrix for the portfolio that does give the teacher choices within the criteria from the state, and that I'll explain. Are there any questions? Are there any questions on the flow chart of what happens when you take it and you're successful or you're not successful?
Any questions?
Okay. In the student progression plan, if you look on page 33, basically is where it starts, and talks about a student who scores a Level Two. Those children go on, but at that point, it's really important to point out that in another clause, and in our district and several other districts, they address that a teacher, principal, and parent conference is held to look at all of the pieces that fit together for that child, to make a decision on whether that child is promoted or retained. If a parent chooses or a teacher recommends a retention, even though they may have scored a Level Two but made Fs all year on the report card, that is a full discussion looking at all the many pieces of an artifact that the child has done that year. That is a principal, teacher, parent, local school decision. When the game plan changes is when the child makes a Level One. Not a parent, principal, teacher conference can override the statute. That's the part that we have to be bound to. When you look at page 34, and we're talking about the promotion for good cause, that is the student that scored a Level One. May not, the student may be assigned to the next grade level, no student may be assigned to the next grade level solely based on age. A third grade student has not met the requirements for promotion may be assigned to the next level for good cause is shown. Good cause exemptions are: a third grade limited English proficiency or ELA student who has had less than two years of instruction in an English or speakers of other languages program, or a third grade student with disabilities whose individual IEP indicates that participation in the statewide assessment program is not appropriate and consistent with the requirements of the State Board of Education rule, or grade three students who demonstrate an acceptable level of performance on a state-approved alternative reading assessment, and in our district, that's a SAT 10 with needing a 45% ranking. The other alternative for a student is a student portfolio. The portfolio option, if selected, must meet assessment criteria from state standard-aligned What some parents are asking is that we simply just turn over classroom daily work. Not all classroom daily work is aligned and vetted to meet a standard. Teachers do at times teach remedial, enrichment, and ongoing lessons that can't, are not tied back to a direct standard. It is a sub-skill and a skill of that standard, but not the complete standard. There's a little bit of confusion there. To meet the standard, you must master all of the skills that's pertaining to that standard, and sometimes they're taught in isolation. Sometimes kids do very well on the pieces of it. So in the portfolio, it must be an accurate picture of the student's ability, and only include student work that has been independently produced in the classroom from state-approved aligned materials. Not every unit test and not every passage in wonders meet that criteria. My department has vetted that book, page by page, chapter by chapter, and created a matrix of the exact passages and units that do meet the standards, and I'll tell you how that'll fit together in just a moment.
And that's one revision we've done this year.
That is another revision we've made. The portfolio must include evidence that the standards assessed by third statewide language arts assessment has been met. You have to prove through this portfolio that they have passed the standards that would have been on the test. That is what makes the portfolio the success for promotion or not. It's not a collection of daily work or artifacts. That's the difference. Evidence is to include multiple choice item passages, and it goes on about 60% literary, then you're 40% informational, zero to 700 words with an average of five, and the evidence would be selected from the Florida's Item Bank platform and from other state-aligned materials. In the curriculum department, based on listening to what I hear and based on input from different groups, we have vetted many, many pieces of materials, the basal reader that the third grade teachers have in their hands, we've incorporated the items and the passages from the state-secured bank, and the teachers have a choice to choose among those pieces that we have pulled together for them in order to see that a student can have more success. The teacher may choose those, but they can only choose from the pieces that have been vetted and that are standard-aligned. That's, that's, the difference is, they have a choice, but the choice has to be from appropriate materials for us to be able to honor. The superintendent is asked to sign off on it, and the principal at the school is asked to sign off on it, as well as the teacher, that the material indeed does meet that criteria. So there's a lot at stake there for the statute. The portfolio must be organized collection of assessment evidence of the student's mastery of these standards. For each student, there must be at least three samples of mastery as demonstrated with a 7% or higher. What we've done this year, on April the 9th, hopefully, we're going to keep our fingers crossed, I'm going to be bringing in all the portfolio contacts from the school to explain to them how my department has taken the state Item Bank items, their reading series items, and other commercial-vetted items that meet all the criteria, verified through the state. We will be taking a look at a matrix so that we can narrow the field down to not 76 or 80 readings by these students. That's ridiculous, and it's unheard of, and it's something that's just not necessary to prove the point. We will pull together 10 to 20. There's a cross-matrix of the questionings and the questions and the value they hold that the students would be able to meet the criteria for promotion without having to read 76 passages. It's in the matrix of how you do the questioning in order to make sure that the question is asking the appropriate thing to master that standard. So I think that will be a great relief to the students not to have a cumbersome number to have to go through, and they are all going to be ranked from the beginning of the basal to the end of the basal. The commercial materials are all within the same reading Lexile range, so they're all equal, apple to apple, and I think that'll make for a better fit for our students for those extra opportunities. Therefore, the portfolio will be signed off by the teacher and the principal that the indeed was done independently and the information provided is accurate. A parent of a third grade teacher who is identified at any time during the year being at risk, yes, the portfolio process can begin, and yes, if a parent wants it to start in September, August, yes, it can, but remember, you want to give them a chance. You want to give them a chance to be taught these skills. You don't want them to have failure too early and then not be able to prove theirself later. You want them to be able to take the time to learn it and improve themselves so they can go on. If a student has been retained, if you continue on here with disabilities, there's different clauses of having an IEP and a 504. If the student has received intensive remediation in reading for more than two years and still has a deficiency, is reading and was previously retained in kindergarten, first, second, or third, or a third grade student who received intensive reading remediation intervention for two or more years but still demonstrates a deficiency in reading and who were previously retained in kindergarten, first, second, third, for a total of two years, the student may only be retained one time at third grade. No longer will we retain two children, I mean, children two years in third grade. If the child has been deficient and it has been retained in anywhere in K and II, then it can only be retained one time at third grade. So that means that there's no more than a total of two retentions from K to III.
And that change for third grade is new this year?
Yes, it did. It used to be you could be retained twice at third grade. So that has changed. Third grade promotion to fourth grade for good cause must be given intensive reading, and it goes into what happens to them when they get into fourth grade and how they're having intensive reading program there, and they're in the MTSS process for intervention plan for those students. If a third grade student demonstrates mastery through the level competence through the alternatives assessment of 45, they go. The portfolio completion may be done during summer reading camp. A child may go to summer camp. A child does not have to go to summer camp. The portfolio shall be district-approved based on state criteria, then both the principal and the superintendent sign off on it. Are there any questions with good cause or with the portfolio?
Yes, ma'am.
On page 37, L, and then the number one, in the bullet, it says, "Grade three students who are retained due to not meeting grade three promotion requirements on the statewide reading assessment must participate in the school district summer reading camp." So I don't know if we want to strike through must and maybe say are highly recommended.
That's on page, that's L what again, Stephanie?
L1, and then it's the first bullet.
It's 36 in your book.
Okay. And it's the bullet.
Got it. We can take care of that. Thank you.
Mark?
Page 35, one word, must, on D. I don't think we need that word there, because it says, you know, "Grade three students who demonstrate mastery must," but then the rest of the numbers don't follow that same clause.
On what one are you?
On page 35.
Which is your 34 probably.
Okay, and what number and letter are you?
D.
Letter D?
Yeah, it's basically all the criteria of the portfolio.
Two D.
I'm just thinking the word must.
A portfolio must be an accurate picture of a student's ability, must? Yes, it must. Is that the must?
Are you talking about?
We might be looking at different spots. D, it says, "Grade three students who demonstrate mastery through a student portfolio," yada, 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 must. So I feel like that must is saying the grade three students must.
It's J, two, D.
Oh, I see.
But then, but then, you know, one, two, three, four.
Must is kind of down here scattered behind the law. Well, what it's saying is a student portfolio, if it's being used for demonstration of mastery, they do have to do those things.
But, but the sentence doesn't, doesn't make sense. I can't connect one, it should be able to continue flowing.
Oh, so you want me to take must out?
Yeah, just take out must.
Okay, that's not a problem. I see what you're saying.
Anything else, Mark?
I have to put some word there, the way it's written.
I'll have to go back and take a look at it, put it, through a portfolio.
Yes, we are.
That's why we need to get the word now. Grade three students who demonstrate mastery through a student portfolio.
Pursuant to rule.
Pursuant to rule.
It's, I think where Mr. Dodd is coming from is the portfolio must do these things, not the student. It's, I think, you're looking at alignment there.
That's exactly right.
Okay, it's not, so somewhere it needs to say the portfolio must do this, not necessarily.
It says through a student portfolio. Through a student portfolio, must, and then there's your five options, but would you like for me to word it?
How do you want it?
I think you just take out the word must, because I feel like A through C, just stop it, you know, at a reasonable spot, so I think, I think taking.
Must is contained within D1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The must is already there.
Yeah.
Okay, not a problem.
Oh, up above.
Okay.
So the must up above.
Oh, got it.
Okay, one of those.
What do you, how are you amending? I mean, this is kind of the record. I've got to be able to go back later and figure out what.
The word must is being taken out.
You're saying the word must and is in each individual one.
So why is it up at this one?
It doesn't have to be repeated.
Can we make grade three students will demonstrate mastery in the opening of D instead of student, grade three students who demonstrate mastery? Could we use the word will there?
Will.
Will demonstrate mastery through a student portfolio?
There you go. There we go.
Got it.
Nailed it.
Then it's different than all the others, because all the others are who.
Who to will and take out must. Is that what I heard?
You were going to do something on page 37.
The word on page 37, that must should be may.
May.
Which is on L1 and then the bullet.
Mm-hmm.
Second line.
May participate.
May participate in the school's district summer reading camp.
Okay. Any other changes?
I'm not sure Mr. Dodd is.
He's not happy over there?
No, I don't think it then has parallel structure to the other, the other sections anymore.
No, because the rest I'm going to say who demonstrates.
Right, absolutely. So I think that that one's fine, just to say is who, and just take out the word must, because we're not need, we don't need it in the D section, because we have it for one, we have it for two, three, four, and five, where it says the portfolio must. So must is already there. Where are you saying that there's a requirement to the portfolio in one through five, but we don't need it above.
Take it out.
It's either got to say may, can, or something. Will.
Then by that logic.
If you take it out and just have the colon, you're good to go. Because then it's following behind.
It's exactly the same as A through C if you take out the word must.
Okay.
Well, then, then by you, by that, no, no, they don't hang, because they follow from the sentence in two, because there's a colon at the end of two. Good cause exemption shall be limited to the following grade three students.
Yeah. We will say, "Grade three students who demonstrate mastery through a student portfolio pursuant to rule FAC."
That's it.
Semi-colon, or colon.
Colon. The portfolio option, if selected, must meet assessment. The portfolio must be an accurate picture. The portfolio must include, you've got the must there, but I do agree with Mr. Johnson, it is kind of left, it's an awkward statement, but can we agree that we will drop the must because it's included in every bullet item to move forward?
What?
Administrative code?
The Florida administrative code.
Would you feel more comfortable if it was spelled out and then the colon?
No.
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 Problem is, the sentence starts, and it is a separate sentence, because up above here, this is good cause exemption.
And it says or.
To the following grade three students. That's what this is modifying as I read this. A, B, C, and D are the good cause exemptions. The grade three students who demonstrate mastery through a student portfolio.
Mr. Johnson, can you speak into your mic, please?
Is that the good cause exemption? Is that the, was intended to be the good cause? Okay, then it's fine.
Okay, so it's fine.
If that's what it's modifying, the exemption for good cause for grade three students, that's what it's supposed to be referring to, then it makes sense.
Can we just take out the must?
Take out the word, the must.
So I want to be clear, on JD, then, the only correction or only change we're doing there is after FAC, colon.
Delete the must, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and the very last page that I'd like to explain is in your handout where it said student progression plan for the 1415. Anyway, I have the next steps file there. What you're going to see is, is that the students are going to be given an opportunity to a portfolio starting now. The students will be given a SAT 10 after they take the FSA before school is out on opportunity. Then we'll offer summer reading camp, and for the first time, we will be allowing the students to begin a new portfolio opportunity for those who do attend summer camp, and then they will get another opportunity at SAT 10 at the end of summer reading camp.
That's good.
So that's more options for the student to have an opportunity to show proficiency. Any questions?
I have one. Mrs. Arnold, we had a public input statement about the portfolio being selected by the student's teacher. Who's, who, who, how does that come to be, so we can make sure we have clarity on that?
The clarity on that is, the teacher has a choice among the approved state materials to choose what she gives the child to go into the portfolio. It can be from the Item Test Bank, it can be from the reading basal that we vetted that shows that it meets the standards. We have two other sources that we're just finishing up, all the vetting that goes into this matrix we're going to give the teacher. So they have opportunities to pick from many passages that meet all the criteria and stay within that 60, 40, and 500-word average. We've done the work for the teachers so they can take a matrix and pick and choose where they want to give the children the opportunity.
Thank you for that clarification. Board members, I need to highlight a couple of things in this particular document. It would be on your page 23 through 25, actually through 27. I think you're a page off a little bit there, but in this particular section, you are highlighting the state and district assessments, and you'll notice we've added IStation, and IStation has been added on page 23, and then on page. and then on page twenty-seven, you've added iReady. These are things you made decisions and voted on earlier in the year when we voted, you know, an item came before you for action to, for Lake County to implement those things. The other item that I want to draw your attention to is on page thirty-three, and you have number fifteen, it says, "Beginning with the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year, district end of course exams are part of the student's end of year evaluation for progress made. However, these results, these exams will not be included in the student's final grade card." That, you'll notice that's new language here. This is where I need to talk about trying to give some flexibility to the students in grades K through four, and in one case, grades K through five. As you know, I've been very, very concerned about grades K one and two. I've been very vocal about that, even as far as the state is concerned because of the number of assessments. So what I have before you, you have a packet before you, where I am addressing elementary assessments. Because our teacher evaluation system has been approved by the state, that we will be including in the evaluation for our teachers K one and two, a district administered assessment in ELA and a district administered assessment in math. That is where the two statutes, and I talked about this a little bit this afternoon, ten oh eight point two-two, gives you flexibility for the teachers to, and principals to decide and choose the assessments that they use to evaluate a student's mastery in, in a particular content area. It does not necessarily have to be an end of course exam. However, when you're talking about teachers' evaluation and the component, the evaluation of students that's going to be included in evaluation, those cannot be teacher-developed by the individual teacher and selected and used only by that individual teacher. It has to be the district administered. So that's where the end of course exams have come in. So we were really looking at, originally looking at end of course exams for K one and two in ELA and math. That would be those ELA, those end of course exams that have, that will be administered district-wide. And then giving flexibility in the science and social studies areas, K through four, K through five, because science has to be for fifth grade administered through the state assessment, system. And our evaluation system, our team plan, since that's been approved, has given us flexibility to do that. Well, the question came up, is that, wait a minute, we are using iStation, we are using iReady, and very efficiently and effectively, which is a research-based, it's nationally developed, it is not developed by any one particular teacher, why can that not serve as the ELA and the math assessment that we use to measure progress for K one and two students? And I believe that that is certainly permissible, and especially because you are including it in your student progression plan. So we know that based, based upon statute ten oh eight point two-two, school districts are required to offer assessments with all courses. Those assessments, based on that statute, does give us some flexibility for the fourteen fifteen school year. So we know the concerns that have been expressed by teachers, administrators, parents, and school board members over the course of this discussion and the community with regards to the amount of testing that is occurring in our schools, particularly at the elementary level, particularly in the early grades, K one, two, three, and four. Now, we know that we were trying to look for as much flexibility as we can as we transition to this new assessment system. So I am recommending several adjustments to be made for this school year, and I have to stress, it is for this school year only. Due to the fact that the board was very proactive at the beginning of the year and invested in iReady and iStation, which is research-based, it is linked to the Florida standards, we can fulfill the statutory requirement for the ELA district administered assessment through iReady and istation for the ELA and the math. This would be for K, grades K one and two. Grades three, four, and five has to be through the FSA, because that's state required. I don't have the authority, nor do this, does the school board, to waive that. So in ELA and math, iReady, iStation, K one through two, grades three through five would be through the FSA. And then we would not be administering any additional EOCs on top of that, that that would fulfill that requirement. Science needs to continue to be assessed through the FSA in fifth grade only. But that does give you some flexibility in K through four for social, science, and K through five in social studies. So we are recommending, very much like Orange County, that teachers will continue to measure student mastery of grade level standards for science and special areas in grades K through four, and social studies, grades K through five, through the traditional teacher methods as have been done in the past. And that would be using that flexibility of item number six, or five, on ten oh eight point two-two. These adjustments will provide additional time for further refinement and teacher review of the EOC test specifications and blueprints prior to any implementation in the future. So it does give us a year of additional time. There was a question that brought up about when has any, when has any of this been disseminated? Angel Taron from our accountability, he's been great, in fact, he's just, he's released over the past several weeks, lots and lots of information, websites, to all the test specifications and the blueprints. We do understand that this is, you know, March, and it would be nice to have those at the beginning of the year. So this indeed does provide teachers that opportunity to review all of those prior to the start of the school year, so they're actually opening up the school year, because, again, this is a one-year component to, to address that, but because of how the statute is outlined. I am concerned about page thirty-three, that number fifteen, because it does talk about district end of course exams are part of the student's end of the year evaluation for progress made. That is true in certain areas. Special areas like art, music, PE, we are going to be using end of course exams for fifth grade students. But K through four, those special area teachers will use their traditional methods as they always have with any of those outlined in statute. So here, this statement is accurate in the fact that we are, excuse me, using some district end of course exams as part, even though we're saying we're not going to include them in part of the student's final grade. However, I have made some modifications here. So this addendum for the two thousand fourteen fifteen needs to really be included in fifteen, so I would just reference this addendum for the fourteen fifteen school year.
Okay, questions?
I've got, I've got a question as it relates to iStation and iReady. I know the, both manufacturers of the program say that they often over-identify students for tier two or tier three interventions. So how would the district then kind of reel that in and say, okay, fifty percent of the students are not behind?
Good question. That will be one, one piece of information, among other things, when we look at placement for students, just like we do in, in all the other grades, except there's a little bit more prescription in third grade. The standardized test is one item among several items, that we still want to look at the student's progress, we want to make sure that the teacher, the parent, the principal, all of the parties are involved in looking at the overall picture of that student, we would, these would be treated exactly the same way. So that it's, it's for consideration, it's one data point.
Sure, and I absolutely, absolutely love that idea for student side of things. What about for, for the teacher, when it goes time for their evaluation score, you know, and half their students are in tier two or tier three?
Yes, well.
That's not necessarily realistic of the student's academic performance. So how do, how does the district reel that in for?
We will be looking, and I'm gonna, I don't know if Ms. Marshall is, we have Barry Farley who's going to be doing the statistics on this. But, and I can have Barry come to a workshop and outline that for you. But there's a couple of things. One, we will be looking at the may score, the may admission, or administration of that test, and that would be the score, and we would come up with the formula that we would be using, just like we would with the FSA or the end of course exam with it. Because, see, the end of course exams, those have not been administered, and whereas we have some validity and reliability statistics surrounding iStation and iReady, we don't have that with the end of course exam. So we were going to have an equalizer in the formula with that. We also have built into the team that safety net, if you will, for teachers this year as we work through all of that, because you've got to test the validity and the reliability of all of that.
Any other questions? Stephanie?
My question actually had the same thing to do with iReady and iStation. Did we administer a, a test at the beginning of the year with iStation?
We have done pre.
And iReady.
Dr. Christensen and Mrs. Arnold can confirm all of that, but yes, we have administered pre, pre-tests in that.
And it does monthly progress monitoring.
So are they going to do a proficiency score in May, or are they going to look at the growth from the beginning to May?
It's proficiency.
Proficiency for this year.
That's what our plan calls for.
And, okay, and that's for this year? And I know there's a whole harmless clause and all those things that are in place, but I do, I just, I would, I have some caution with iReady and iStation, just from what I'm hearing from the district, and like, like Mr. Dodd stated with the over-identification, I've, I've had teachers say, you know, on various, various different buildings have said, they feel like they don't have a say, that they have a required number of minutes that they have to put the students on iStation, iReady for, and they don't feel like that's, we know what's effective is the teacher instruction, not the computer instruction. And so I, I would like, I think, I applaud the district for making this decision for this year, a hundred and fifty percent. It's exactly the right thing to do. I just hope we spend some time this summer looking at how we're using iReady and iStation and.
I may answer that for you.
Go ahead.
Yes. We are working with UCF at the moment to take a look at administration of iStation certain times of the year for points and for data points, and iReady does that also, and that the teacher can use it on demand. But I can say one thing that I know for a fact, when it's used with fidelity, and they do the progress monitoring, and they target the students with the skills that they're producing, in several cases, we're seeing phenomenal results, that a teacher has moved every child out of the bottom two tiers.
And if we could capture that for that evaluation purpose, where we're looking across the school year.
It is amazing what several teachers have done with this programs. So I have to say, there's a lot of good.
Well, and I'll be quite frank with you, when I originally started looking at this, it was giving flexibility in the science and the social studies area, and, which would eliminate the, the, we would give that flexibility, so we would not administer the EOCs in those two areas. But the, with regards to ELA and math, I was sticking with the end of course exams for those two. But that, but then when, what was brought to us was, wait a minute, iReady and iStation, they're nationally developed, they are giving diagnostic data, just like the Iowa test of basic skills, you know, the SAT ten. We don't use the SAT ten for this particular purpose, for K one and two, for the evaluation purposes. We did last year, but we have gone away from that as we got input and feedback. So when you really look at it, you know, we can use that this year, but I do think there are some concerns with it. Just like with the end of course exams, you know, this, they're just being developed, they're being rolled out, we don't have a baseline for them. The, the drawback of not using the end of course exams at this point in time means that we're not baselining it this year, which I, I, that is, that is a disadvantage here, but we're also not overlaying all these assessments on our children.
Right. And then one last question. You said that Mr. Taron had, had rolled the blueprints. I had written down one of the blueprints, but you said he'd rolled several out over the last week, a couple of weeks. Has he rolled, are they all out now, especially for like elective areas?
I can't say it's all, all, but I know that he sent out an email with links to go, because some of, they're now ready to go for when the schools needed to print out to start the administration of them.
Dr. Moxley, Ms. Luke, I just wanted to add one piece. You know, the diagnostics that we had previously for kindergarten, first and second graders in math in general were lacking. So the advantage here, we are going to take a look at, at the end of the year, and University of Central Florida, as part of the appropriation through the legislature that provides the funding for Lake County to use iStation, is actually going to take a good look at the data, how it's working, how it's not working, make some recommendations. And actually, iStation and iReady are making adjustments with their content and so forth as well. So I think the tool will get better with, with, with the right kind of research and study and development over time. And I'll also tell you that just because they set certain cut scores, doesn't mean we can't look at it in the same way that they're going to look at FSA this year in terms of, so many percentage at third grade and tenth grade did not pass the previous year on FCAT. It's not like all of a sudden seventy percent are not going to be moved forward. Does that make sense? So we're going to look at iStation and iReady data in that same way, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Dr. Moxley?
Okay, then, at this time, I'd like to, and Mr. Johnson, I'm going to ask you to kind of help walk through this. Let's go before I do that, yeah.
Before I go walking.
Okay.
Is the appendix referenced anywhere?
Well, that, that's what I needed to add here. So.
You're adding it to?
Yeah, on page. On page thirty-three.
Number fifteen.
Number fifteen. And I need, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Mr. Johnson, make sure you speak into your mic, David keeps coming out and looking at me.
My, my concern is, is the way this is written here, I don't want it to be misunderstood that we're going to be providing flexibility with these end of course exams. It is stated here in number fifteen, that district end of course exams are part of the student's end of year evaluation for progress made. That is true in certain instances, but not in all, and it's further clarified on this document. So my.
I think you just explained that, as further clarified in appendix A.
Okay.
All this appendix A.
Okay. Okay, all right. Then, at this, okay.
That makes three changes.
Yes.
So at this time, I'm going to recommend tentative approval of the student progression plan for two thousand fourteen fifteen with the following three changes that have been made tonight to this document. Page thirty-three, item fifteen, add the language as further clarified in appendix A.
After the first sentence.
After the first sentence. On page thirty-five, letter J, paragraph, or paragraph two, D. At the end of that sentence, we would delete the word must.
Correct.
After FAC. And then on page thirty-seven, in section L, number one, the first bullet, the second line, that must will be changed to may.
That is correct.
And it will be added.
And the appendix A will be added to the document.
Okay. Yes?
I've got another question.
Okay.
And it was, it was about the proof of residency.
Okay.
I was wondering if, if we're going back to that for, for discussion or, my, my question is whether or not we're going to revisit this, because, you know, I, I struggle, I like the idea of, of increasing our documentation from one to two, but I have to wonder, based on the way that this is written, and I know the committee is, there's a committee working on other policy, and so what does that, what does that process look like? So we're going to, we're going to get a chance to talk about this attendance, this residency policy again.
You're going to get a chance to talk about the student assignment policy, which is five point two oh. The committee is finishing, they had an April first deadline, so they're about to be done, so they'll come back in one of our meetings in April, and they're going to, because they were aligning, trying to align all the documents. And I think it's policy five point two oh, talks about residency as well, assignment, what documentation you have to present, and they, I think they were going to go back and add, and Dr. Doyle's here, if, if you want to speak more specifically to it, but they were going to add about, you know, how to do the, the follow-up, and that schools, when they're going to do the spot checking. Every school doesn't have an iPad distribution like, like Miniola does, but they have other, other events that they can do to verify. Now, again, that does, if, if someone's going to present false information to us, we may not necessarily know that if they present a valid driver's license and it has an address on it, we don't know whether that's accurate or not without somebody physically going with the parent, home to their address, and verify that they're living there. And frankly, each school doesn't have the staff to do that. But, I mean, there, so there is that part about, you know, somebody's presenting false information, then, you know, we've got, somebody's got to tell us, you know, that.
And maybe, you might be able to speak to this in, in your remarks, but basically where I was for the rest of the board to understand, that by, by just picking any two of these documents, they could present a driver's license and a voter registration card, but nothing that was really current for their home? And if my driver's license is out of date, you could probably bet the farm that my voter's, voter registration card is out of date too, so I didn't think that that really solidified.
policy update for 5.20 and also the standard operating procedures for the out-of-zone enrollment piece. We've been working these two documents, the student progression plan simultaneously, looking at that through committee. We have our next meeting on Wednesday, and we will sit with those six principals and other committee members to update that according to the conversation we're having today for school, for the student improvement, student progression plan. I know our earlier conversation, we went from one piece of documentation to two. And what I'm hearing from you is that you would rather have more than two pieces of documentation. Is that, is that correct?
No, I'm okay with two. I just, I wonder if they can be maybe separated into categories, you know, because I don't want them to be able to pick their driver's license and their voter registration card and that'd be it. You know, that doesn't, I mean, you know, because, you know, like I said, if you haven't updated your driver's license, you probably haven't updated your voter registration card. And there's nothing that you're presenting that shows that you are really, you know, anything of current, you know, value.
So would you like it to be driver's license or voter registration and one of the following?
Yeah.
One of the following.
I'd feel much more comfortable with that.
That's easy to do.
Okay. We can ask, we'll make sure both policies, pieces are consistent. And Dr. Moxley mentioned the other piece with the idea of looking at the iPad registration to do some verification checks. In our SOPs, we're gonna add some language in that, giving schools options for random event verification. So that looks different from every school, but it gives that piece in our SOPs.
And see, a lot of this, Mark, this is the year that we're in right now. This is how far behind we are. These suggestions that you think, and it's not our fault that we're far behind, it's the state. These other suggestions and the work that they're doing now will go into the one for next year.
Sure. And, you know, that's why I bring them up. Because, you know, I know by the time we talk about next year, the district has already been operating half a year under the old policy. So if, and then by the time we have a chance to talk about the policy, you know, we can't really change it because.
Right.
So I felt like this was probably the most appropriate time for that.
So if we go, now, I need to amend my recommendation to include the fourth additional change. On section, on page nine, E, number two, you have the first sentence there. So instead of the second one saying any two of the following, it would need to say valid Florida driver's license or Florida identification card with current physical address or voter's registration card with current physical address and any one of the following documents.
Right.
Yes. We can make those updates, yeah.
Right.
I'll take care of it.
Yes. That's good.
No, did I do that right?
Well.
We have to be out of here by.
It doesn't work in the way that it's listed here.
Okay. I was taking B and C out of the list.
Where are you putting them?
And moving them up.
Up into the paragraph.
Where it would say, proof of residence, a parent slash guardian enrolling a student or students must present evidence that the student resides in the school's designated zone. A valid driver's, Florida driver's license or Florida identification card with current physical address or voter's registration card with current physical address, plus any one of the following documents would provide acceptable, acceptable evidence of residency.
Then lease A.
And then you.
Rent is B. Bill a sale is C.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want that same change down in number three when it talks there about?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's fine. So you would duplicate the same change in number three as well. That's fine. That's your amendment? That's my amendment.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
The vote.
Second.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions? Comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
We gotta do a public hearing.
Oh, gosh.
We're trying to do that so much. We have to have a public hearing.
Go for it.
Where's Mrs. Van Dyke? She'll call you on it.
The matter before the board is the tentative approval of the student progression plan for the 2014-2015 school year. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this issue? Please come forward to the podium at this time.
Ms. Foster?
Several of you have been in email contact with me. I really wanna stress this portfolio issue, especially for our kids with disabilities. My child is one of those kids. I chose to hold her back last year in second grade, knowing she wasn't ready. As far as the iReady goes, she has taken iReady. iReady puts her on a kindergarten level. She is now in her second year of second grade. So how did she get out of first grade? If iReady is telling her this, I'm telling you, my kid is getting screwed left and right from all of this testing. My only option left, to pull her out for the end of third grade, disenroll her and re-enroll her again, or tell her to go through these tests and mark an A on every single answer and invalidate her test completely. So please, take the time to think about what you're doing to these kids with disabilities. She is finally, this year, coming out of her shell to want to learn. BPK, she was forced for four hours, four hours straight as a four-year-old to sit and do 100 board. She withdrew. First grade, she went, she could not read. It was not looked at until the end of April that there was an issue with her reading for her to start intervention. The school also didn't wanna start services yet. They said wait till third grade to start looking at these issues. That's too long. It's too long. We need to take a step back and look at what this is doing to our kids with disabilities who are already behind, who are already struggling, who already know that they are not at the same level with their classmates. So please, take the time to look at this portfolio, give them the chance to prove what they can do, what a test cannot show that they can do. Thank you.
Dr. Moxley, that was a question I was gonna ask you earlier. Is that something that Ms. Arnold can meet with her?
Actually, this would be something Ms. Arnold and Judy Miller would meet together because of.
And help her.
Different programs that would be involved.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. And the comment I made earlier was not just to say we needed to get out of here, but if we stay past 8:30 or before 8:30, we have to take a recess in order for David to change the video equipment for another disc. So we can move on here.
I have two very quick items that I can do in one minute. First of all, first of all, one, I want you to know that Lake County Schools was highlighted in Education Week, which is a national publication. And it had to do with the Government Finance Officers Association and our work with the Gates Foundation, our strategic finance plan. And we're leading the country. So that was a, and we have another project, and Mrs. McLeod is involved with that. And so how we're doing our budgeting and accounting, and so it's a great article with that. There's a lot more to that, but it's a great article.
Can we send a copy of that to us?
We can send you the link for that. And as far as letters of condolence, we sent letters to Mrs. Cunningham and Mr. Cunningham for the loss of Mrs. Cunningham's mother. And to the families of Sue Mullin, who is a retired principal in our school district that passed away last week. So that's all I have.
Okay. Board members.
I can talk really fast.
Okay. I know you can.
I wanted to say, it is such a pleasure to be able to sit down here by you guys. We had Justin two weeks ago. And then to have the pleasure of working with you and getting to know you a little bit better. And thank you for all of the work that you do with your students. The rookie teacher of the year was fantastic. It is such an honor to be a part of those ceremonies and just to celebrate those teachers. I appreciate that very much. And they did a wonderful job representing their schools and the administrators that come out to support those teachers. It means the world to them to see their support of, not only do their colleagues come, but their administration comes, and it's a really, really nice celebration of what's going on that's good. I also wanted to thank the district for their forethought in putting the K2 reading and math assessments as the only requirement for the teacher evaluation. I don't think, had that been done, we wouldn't have been able to sit here tonight and approve that change and lift the testing requirements for K through four for those other areas. And that was a huge accomplishment. And I don't know that people recognize that that had to be done first, or we would've had to go back and approve amendments to a plan and so forth. So excellent work on the part of that staff. And I, you know, having, having a kindergartner, truly appreciate the fact that she will not have to take end-of-course. Thank you for that. And to, for the student, for all the other students that that affects. I appreciate the willingness to look at iReady and iStation and consider those heavily whenever we do that. And the fact that we're using something that teachers are already doing. So I just feel like in the time and the phase that we're in right now, where I hear that morale is low, anything we can do to make teachers feel like what they're doing is validated and what they're doing is right and their professional opinion matters is going to really help alleviate some of that. And that's what we need right now to help this district excel to excellence. And I feel like we're on the way to do that. So I think that that's great. I would, can we get the emails sent with the blueprint updates that Mr. Turon sent? I would love to be able to see those as well. And I'm out. That's good.
Good. I had a couple of items. And one is a follow-up to the remarks about the live streaming of the meeting and making sure those available. I know that I had gotten a couple of email comments over the past, of the course of the last few weeks, asking about that. And so I'm not quite sure where we are, but certainly from a transparency standpoint and involving our public who can't come out in the middle of a day to a meeting, it'd be great to be able to have those available. So I.
And we could do that when we're in our boardroom. Today was a little more difficult because we were in an off-site at the, at the public safety complex with that. So that, yes, we will be starting that back. I do have a staff member that will be doing that.
Okay. When we're offsite, is it possible to record them? Maybe they're not live streaming, but at least make them available for playback later if somebody wants.
That's what we will have to do.
Okay. All right, that'd be good. The next, next item I have is in regards to a lot of comments I've heard during the rezoning process. You know, and I know that we were doing a lot of program comparisons between the two high schools, Lake Maniola High and Southlake on the south end. And certainly, I've heard from other board members, as you start comparing these programs to the north end, the disparities are even larger. So I was wondering if maybe at a future workshop, we might be able to take a look at a summary of those. And so that way, we might be able to maybe allocate properly for.
Thank you.
Trying to create that, that kind of equity across the county. Because I know we're all elected to serve the entire county, not, not just the.
Thank you. Because I was gonna bring that up. We do, we do have that. Happy to give that to you when you, when it. Comes to budget time, we will be having to cost that out because there is facility costs that go along with that.
Sure. I recognize that. But just, I think, I think by seeing the picture will, will help us make some, you know, educated and realistic decisions. The last time I've got is also in regards to offerings. I've heard from a number of parents this week who are, I think, excited about a word that Southlake High School will offer another foreign language, but wonder whether or not the right one is being offered. And my great fear would be, you know, from a board standpoint, that we allocate for a position just for the sake of allocating for a position and only four people sign up to take it. So I was wondering if we had done any polling of the students to ensure that that's something that they're interested in going forward.
I would need to speak with the principal of that particular school. I will tell you that when we brought Mandarin Chinese, is the one I'm assuming you're speaking to.
Yep.
Mandarin Chinese is a very global-recognized language out there. I've seen some of the other languages that they have been kind of asking about. That has never come to my, my knowledge with that. We were looking strictly from what is progressive, what is cutting-edge, and the Mandarin Chinese has been. And when you look at all your comprehensive high schools that have those high-level programs, Mandarin Chinese has been the very progressive foreign language. That doesn't mean that if they wanna offer something else, you know, that's certainly up for discussion. So, you know, with that. And you have to be able to get, you know, a certified teacher in that. I've heard a variety of different languages being tossed around. Some, there are readily certified people available, and some, they're not. And then you have to be willing to have students that will take it for the two or three years.
Absolutely.
And not just a one-time, because I'm curious about that.
Sure. You know, and I guess my asterisk to all of that is, you know, I'm not personally invested in which language is offered, as long as it is one that is going to have broad appeal to the students there. And so, you know, I was just really interested from a polling standpoint of whether or not, you know, we've, we've touched that point. And, and, you know, I will give you my applause and kudos on what we've done in the elementary assessment world. I think this is, this is really a step in the right direction in doing what's right for our kids, especially in regards to testing. So I, I hope we'll be able to keep the momentum going forward as we look at all the other assessments in the county and figure out what is reliable and appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brandyberg?
Last week, actually, Bill and I both were judges for the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. And all six students did great jobs, but would like to congratulate Denzel Jones, who is a senior at Leesburg High School, who was selected as this year's student of the year for the Boys and Girls Club. Actually, it was youth of the year. The rookie teacher of the year was great. Would like to say thank you to the Educational Foundation for putting this on, to our culinary arts students from Eustis High School, Mount Dora High School, and Taverri's High School. They, they did a great job. And I just wanna say thank you to all of our teachers. They work so hard, day in and day out, and we had a chance to recognize some of our best and brightest, but we have so many that we would love to recognize. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mathias?
I got a quick handout, and then I'll speak to it. Today, we had, we had a, actually, we've been together 12 hours right now. So, and in the course of our debate and civil discourse about what was right, a board member referred to my strategy as gerrymandering. If we're going to have a civil discussion and civil discourse, that we spent two days together in what's called master boarding, where we, we, at least we found that we were all working for our children and that we respected the motives. To put out the word gerrymandering, which I didn't know what it was, so I had to go print it out. And it's not even really applicable, by the way, but it is meant to be condescending. And when the board chair agreed, and when the board member also spoke to the community and used the same word referring to my strategy, I just think it is ultimately disrespectful, disrespectful of the process and of each other. That is why I was less than enthusiastic about carrying on the master board as a program. And to be honest with you, if this is the way we're going to approach it, I have no